Alright, just doing final checks, make sure everything's good. Audio looks good. Visual stuff looks good. Yep, we're good. Doing a, for anybody that is watching, doing a test stream at the moment. Um, for our town hall meeting, which will be starting at four thirty. Um, and then. We should have everybody here by then, around then. We'll talk about a bunch of stuff. Welcome, welcome. See, some viewers are up and on there. We'll be, uh, starting town hall meeting around four thirty. Let's get everybody into the audio chat, so we can all talk. And then. Can you, can you hear us? Or can you hear me Edgar? Well, now I know chat works, so I can see that. Sweet, okay. I've done some tests this afternoon. Uh, let me turn my audio down a little bit. I did some tests this afternoon, um, where I'd recorded a couple streams. Uh, and then went back and checked the audio, but you never quite know what's gonna happen. That, and I'm listening to myself bounce back through my computer in my other ear, so I may have to change that at some point. I don't like hearing myself. Welcome, everybody. I don't have a fancy, uh, goddammit, hold on. There we go. I don't have a fancy intro or anything like that to display or show off to. Make us look super duper fancy, so we'll just start here. And then I'll put up the other stuff out as we move along. I smell dirty work. You are dirty work, Mr. Dead Eye Tom. I like this, it's like pre-stream, uh, shit talking. Here we go. Audio sales seems to be working. Don't lick this stripper pole. Well, somebody's gotta wax them. I see a mum's ups, hops is here.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Wow, much better this time too.
Yeah, pretty clear.
Yeah, we'll see how long that lasts.
Can anybody hear mums? We got a couple people in, in chat already.
You do?
Dead Eye Tom says why. Like the letter Y, so I'm assuming that's a yes. Edgar says I can, so.
Alright.
Things seem to be working.
Yay.
So. What I figured out. Is that I use my, my Discord account. As the main on the computer, which all of the audio will go through that. And then I use my secondary account on my phone, so that we can talk and then everything just gets picked up and broadcast.
Ah, sneaky.
Tricky, tricky, yeah. For some reason, um, whatever problem they're having with Discord and audio on. The personal computers on PCs, uh, it's just across the board, it's for everybody, so there's just general issues with that, but it works fine on the phone.
Huh.
So. Just gotta be a little sneaky on it.
Okay. We'll see. I've got my phone sitting stationary in a corner, so hopefully that will be sufficient.
Do you have like rabbit ears coming out the, the headphone jack up to the roof and? A lot of fire staying up there trying to adjust them?
Yeah, he's not here right now.
That would've been funny.
That would've been funny. Actually, right now I'm trying to work on my orbies. While I have internet and I can get into Destiny.
Ooh, fun, fun.
Yeah, I'm on the Leviathan. I probably got about ten more minutes and then I'll get kicked.
Probably.
It's about four thirty is about, I guess my bedtime, I don't know.
You got an early bedtime.
Uh-huh, for Destiny apparently. So Metal was gonna be able to be here, yes?
As far as I know, yes. Um, I know he said he was trying to get home. From his trip. I see him, I see his name keep popping up and on, but I'm not sure.
He's just lurking.
He's, yeah, he hasn't joined the chat or anything yet, but he's lurking.
Then Thunder. Is he, is he honestly golfing or is he just being?
I don't know. That's the thing is like, he said that, I'm like. Isn't it like smoky as all hell up there? How are you golfing today?
Well, cuz sometimes they do that, you know, cuz of the customers, you gotta go hang with the customers even though. Doesn't mean you have to be smart.
That's true. Oh, I see Metal.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh my god, it works. Technology.
This is the last time, isn't that amazing?
I don't wanna talk about what happened last time.
I don't know, I had like two headsets going, so I don't know.
I know. Well, at that point, I was thinking, well, would it be easier if I just called mums on the phone with, you know, the real phone number and tried to do it that way?
Oh, no, it's so ridiculous.
Speakerphone next to your mic.
Right? Basically what I did.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I've known, this finally works, kind of, I mean, there's still one piece that's broken, but. Oh, last time we were, I was trying to, I, I have a Mac computer and, uh. I tried to do the split operating system and run PC with Windows on it. So that I could pull the audio from that, from, uh. I forget what it's called, their little, where you can basically pull Xbox Party Chat. Uh, I tried to pull that in and run that through OBS, but, um. That was not happening last time, so I had to put mums on a headphone, which I basically wrapped around my microphone. So anytime she talked, it would come out of the headphone into my microphone and then back into, but he could hear it.
That's fun.
So it was a shit.
Hey now.
At best. Even though I had tried things out and try, and had, had it kind of figured out, still went to hell at one point, so.
Well, but my, my stuff is just so wonky that.
Well, the thing went out and this is why I'm glad we did this a couple days ago, or yesterday. Is, uh, I had an extension in my computer that I was using that was supposed to be able to take the, and. Split it and put it into OBS. Well, it's been out of date for like six years. So it was actually corrupting every.
Oh, my goodness.
On the comp- and making things run slow and it was just, it was awful, so I got rid of that. And I got something new, and it's like a miracle, it works beautifully with no slowdown. Yeah, it was more than likely my fault. I will accept all. Alright. I'm gonna switch over to our screen.
So am I supposed to be looking at something?
You can if you want, I mean, I'm gonna bring up, um. The document on.
The one we already looked at?
The one that's, yeah, that's already out, and then I figure we can go through, modify what we want, add what we want, um. Things like that, take out things that are just egregious and we don't need anymore. Um, stuff like that, just kind of update and figure out what all is going on. Any ideas that people have and stuff for. New things and stuff. Moonja streaming from the game, dicking around, solve your chat issues. Yeah, but then we can't really display. Much of what we've got going on, so like I can put on, hmm, which one is?
I'm just running around, dinking around.
Yeah. See, I can put the, I can put this document right on the center for everybody to see that I top, so you guys can see the things that I'm. Typing out and changing and stuff like that, and you don't have to take my word for it. If I wanna taco, put taco in there. Taco taco.
Taco taco.
Yeah. May just have to start without Thunder. Like you said, cuz he's golfing, possibly, we don't.
Well, and for them, for them, it's still early, it's only three thirty.
Right.
All this loot, all this ammo schmamo.
I'm gonna jinx it right here, your internet is doing really bad right now.
Oh, well, I, I know for Destiny, I don't have much longer, which is why I'm just trying to get these orbs. Not doing anything of high, high maintenance.
Right.
So modifier got on here, I told him to come to the Leviathan and just kill things, right?
Right.
For, for the first time. In all the times we've done the raid, he actually understood what, he ran around and saw the standards and stuff. And actually understood what we were doing. Cuz usually he just guarded the pad, you know?
Oh, that's right, yeah, we just sent you.
Yeah, so he never, he, he had no idea. Where, where the things came from or anything, so it was kinda interesting.
Yeah, the interesting thing about that raid is every week, that location.
Yeah.
So it's not always in the same spot twice.
Well, even, even at that, he had, he was like, oh wow, this guy's got this thing, I just killed this guy, and he did, I said, uh, yeah. But it's just, you know, he never, um, you know, he just killed things, wasn't too worried at the time, whatever was going on.
I know, we just tell him, alright modifier, you point, you shoot here and we'll do the stuff.
Yeah.
Go.
Yeah, just funny, funny stuff. So are you home Metal? Are you driving?
Nope, I am home.
Booyah.
Didn't, didn't, we take you away from responsibilities and?
Say what?
We didn't take you away from responsibility.
Oh no, my, um, we got home earlier, probably around. Uh, twelve thirty one. And I did, I had kid duty up until just a few minutes ago.
Thanks.
My wife, mother-in-law took my daughter and youngest out to eat and. My son stayed here.
Gotcha.
So it's just, just me and him at home right now. I got him watching some TV and hopefully he'll be content during the course of this conversation.
Good luck.
No, I, I gave him a, and I said, alright, this is what's gonna happen at four thirty, we're gonna do this, this and this, you guys. Can play on your games and do whatever you want, I don't mind if you're loud or whatever, but. After we get done with this meeting, then we're gonna do some dinner and stuff, so, can you guys continue? Can you still?
Yes, we can do.
I love it.
You could drink all you want Edgar, as long as you're, that's fine.
Cool, I just got my two fifty orby drops, so I'm happy.
Hmm, nice, seven fifty, two fifty?
Two fifty, two fifty. Not too bad, about, uh, how long did it take me? When did I go in there? Probably about four, so about half hour. By myself?
That's not bad. Pioneer, is Thunder still out, uh, golfing?
Bless you.
Mum says bless you. Good. So is it not updating my? Browser? Uh, oh my god.
Lots of half hues.
Let's try that, see if it does it correctly now.
Okay, so what else am I working on? Actually, if I was smart, I would get out of here before I get kicked.
Does it move? Nope, doesn't move.
I wanna thank everybody for all the hard work you do and the engrams I can pick up from Hawthorne that have helped me level up little by little while I haven't been able to do much, thank you very much. I'm so serious.
Let's see if I can get this browser fixed. Interesting, it doesn't actually go up or down. Very interesting. Display capture, let's do that. Display. No.
You have to kill a hundred enemies without reloading your weapon, how does that work?
Uh, very, very careful.
Is the gun reload itself?
Kill a hundred en- enemies, oh no, what did I do?
Oh, oh, my brain, never mind, I don't know what I'm reading, you just gotta get streaks. Five, ten, yeah, okay, my brain's like, how in the world are you supposed to kill a hundred people without? All these things, okay.
There we go.
Uh-oh.
That will display better.
So I'm, I'm not gonna be touching my phone to look at anything, so that my thing won't drop, so I won't see anything you display, okay?
You're, you're fine, it, it, it's basically just a document with.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave, leave on this, and then, here we go, now it goes up and down. Yeah, it got fixed, uh, he's driving his boss to the airport, then he should be on, okay. I can't believe he played golf in that smoke, still.
They do. You know? Fun things, yay.
So I guess we can get started while, um, Thunder gets rolling in, haha, get it, rolling thunder, anyways. I'm, I'm done now.
That's good, cuz I have no idea where you were going.
I know, we've, we've added, uh, Healing Bear, he said. He was gonna try to join if had the time and opportunity, um, actually, I should double check, he should have access to this team. Permission, so bad, yeah, so he can join at any time, uh, and he can give us a, his ideas, um, but. Kinda wanted to go over our old document, I mean, part of it's kind of relevant, part of it's not, because, I mean, I. Tried to add different sections for Division and ES, and actually I should probably add one more for like other games. Since we have multiple. Things that we do now. There we go. Just gonna leave it like that. Um. Since our last town hall meeting, lots of things have changed. Thanks to Metal, we have a crap ton of bouncing around. In our Discord, which is very awesome, thank you sir, appreciate all of your hard work with that.
No, it's been fun.
Really nice. I'm glad, um. I know it's been very interesting to watch and see. You know, your post has been up for Division and trying to get people in, but, um. There are people that play ESO and Destiny and stuff like that, and they're kind of all coalescing this. Game sphere, and it's been kinda cool to see people come in and be like, yes, I play this too, add me to the Destiny, uh, plan two, and it's like, oh. And, uh, getting to see and meet some of those people has been kinda awesome.
And as, I mean, we're, we hit capacity now, which is cool, um.
Right.
And as spots open up, I'll, I'll just continue to kind of shoot for that whole multi-game aspect and, uh. It's been working real well for us, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think so, um, definitely. Definitely gave us a lot more rounded, well-rounded people in different areas and stuff like that, cuz there are people that bounce around and play. Different stuff, so has been cool.
Yeah, I don't.
I know, I know with the. Um, Reddit posts and stuff like that, I tried to go through the official channels and see. What was going on with the, that stupid image that continues to be posted. Um, tech support said there's nothing I can do to change it, nothing they can do to change it, that's kinda just baked into. The, the way it is, um, but I don't, don't know if they were about what's actually going on, they were just supports. Or they weren't anybody that does any of the coding or anything like that, so, uh. The guys that I, I did a forum post and asked, and I got a response, and they said it should update over time. Unable to give me an amount of time of how long it takes, so it could anytime before that image changes. Um, one of the other assets or the new asset that's at the top of the list on our. Um, I keep checking, just to double check, uh, for new people that see it, it should be. The, um, image, not the. Um, anthem one, but I don't know, I looked on other phones and iPads and stuff like that, and it's not any. Different for them, I'm not quite sure where that at all lies.
I mean, to be honest, it, it never really bothered me. Um, yeah, you know, would be nice, but it's. Not gonna make or break or anything.
Yeah, it was just unfortunate that it, I, I had realized it's, I could've changed. You said, and then it would've represented, you know, more of our poster, more of dungeon protocols. Rather than just being an image of just anthem, you know what I mean, so.
Wasn't that something that you can change in time, you know, come up with something to replace it? Is that, do you have to pull that image?
Uh, I don't know, it's just whenever the, um, the URL is first put in, what it does is it goes to the website and it. Brings up a list of all of the images in the site, and it just takes the first one, and it goes, alright, that looks good, and puts it on the post. This is what represents, um. I didn't realize which one was at the top of our list at that time. Hopefully in time it'll, they'll update their asset list on Reddit, and it'll go and look for a new image and pull that and put it in there and change it out.
Why are you pulling the images from there?
Not me, that, everything's done on Reddit's, Reddit's, so I have no control over it, and they. Their whole system goes and finds the images and sets it up, but then it stores them and doesn't allow anybody to mess with them, so.
Right, right.
Basically, whenever we did the, the recruitment post, when I would attach the, the live link to our website. It would automatically attach that image.
How weird.
Yeah, it would pull the anthem image, it would pull. Yeah. It would pull the anthem image. It would pull the anthem image that it had. Yeah, it was a test. It's all a test.
That's all technology is. You know that, right?
Oh, yeah. We're just poking and prodding it till it does what we want.
Oh, man.
So with our expansion into more games and more people and stuff like that, you know, Healing Bear had said, hey, I'm interested in helping some of this stuff, and I saw that as an opportunity to be like, oh, cool. He's really into posting, you know, information about the games and updates and things, uh, and he's got time to do it and he's interested in doing it. That would be a good place for him to be able to do that. I gave him like a sub admin role, put his role into different sections, and he can post things or like he was trying that bot that he had built that pulls from Twitter, um, which he told me about at first. I was like, oh, that sounds very interesting. I'd be interested in trying that out and seeing if it, um, so. And I think it's pretty cool. I, I know initially he wanted to put it in, in the four channels that we have it in now, and then all of the, he wanted to do one in Borderlands, Nintendo, and I think Call of Duty. I was like, well, I think we should probably cut back and do the and see how that goes and see how overloaded is or if it's over-underloaded, and then we can adjust from there. And that's kinda where we're at with testing that, is seeing what, what is too much or what makes.
With those, I, I do think it is nice, though, keeping them out of like a chat channel as opposed to an announcement channel. Um, cuz it, yeah.
Kinda why I wanted them there. I didn't want them just continual blast in like the normal Division chat. And I figured the announcements channel was a good place because nobody else can post their, us, and then if that new bot was working correctly, then, you know, it would be a good place for that stuff to go and not get lost or be kind of like a repository where people could go back, kinda like you were doing Mums and looking through the ESO stuff and be like, oh, I'm, those are the stuff that I missed or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I, Tom, we went, we went, we went hard on that at the beginning there just to see how it would work. Um, cuz the bot, it can't differentiate what is a, a, a primary tweet and what is a retweet or a reply. So it just goes and all of these things are good, and then it pulls them all and just starts posting them one at a time. Um, which like with the Destiny accounts, um, like the Bungie Help, they do a fairly good job of only posting information that is relevant to the game and not replying to people or mixing in a bunch of random stuff. So, uh, one of the adjustments for the Division was finding a channel, a Twitter channel that does simple. So I think that'll help out reduce the amount of pings that we get and still give us relevant information. Then, then we don't have to go track down the information and, and post it manually ourselves.
Yeah, see with ESO, there's, um, I think because they have so many, um, they have quite a few streamers that give out a lot of the current information. There's not, um, a lot of avenues, which is totally fine with me. Um, a little bit is good. Don't need, don't need repeats of the same stuff. So.
Right. Well, how old is ESO?
ESO is older than Destiny.
I thought so. So, I mean, the amount of people running news and stuff for ESO is limited and smaller. Uh, there is, there is still value in like the stuff that is coming up out of there, which I think is.
I think, I, I, yeah, I think the reason it's like that is because ESO does, um, ZOS does, uh, almost not quite weekly, but at least once or twice a month, they do big patches, you know, adjusting stuff all the time. And they put out pages on their forum. They have, they utilize their forum a ton, and so they have pages and pages of all the information on the actual forum. So people really wanna know, that's where they would go. So they only tweet tidbits because, you know, and letting people know, okay, this is out, this is out, this is out. You wanna know more, go here. And that's, that's where all the chatter is, is on the forums.
Right.
Because that's where the, you know, the, like, one of the ones they did here recently was like twenty pages of fixes they were doing. And so, you know, it, all the chatter goes there instead of flooding the internet. So that's kinda, kinda how they've chosen to do that.
Well, I know with the patch bot that we have, they do Destiny and Division, and I was hoping that they had ESO, but unfortunately they didn't, and I wasn't sure why. But I was, I was hoping to be able to put that one in there for that as well. They did not support that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's okay, cuz like I said, there's, there's, ESO right now is a quiet place. And, um, and it's okay, it's quiet, um, cuz it's one of those things that people have to really decide that's what they wanna do and and sometimes it takes a while for people to decide that. So it's, it's not that big of a deal. Hello?
Oh my god, there's a thunder. A long distance. Are you in your truck?
He is.
I am driving from an airport back to a location that's not an airport.
That's profound.
This feels like DSH Drive Thru all over again.
It doesn't it?
I dropped off my boss at the airport and now I'm driving home.
Well, drive safe. How's the smoke out there?
It's better today. I know earlier today it was down to like, uh, one eighty, one, or one sixty-five, one seventy, uh, was I think the best I saw. So.
That's good.
Yeah, a lot better, a lot better overall.
That's much, much better.
Yeah. No, it's super good. Comparatively, I mean, a little smoky. It's been raining all day. I was at a, we had a work thing for a, a golf. I had to go golf for work, and it's been raining all day, so I'm wet. But other than that, it's good.
Rain's good.
Cool. The rain is good in Firetown, yes.
Yes. Very good in Firetown.
Hopefully to get some of that stuff.
A, B, C, D.
That was five less.
We were just talking.
Perfect.
Talking about, um, talking about the people we've added and, um, recruitment posts, uh, Reddit a little bit. Um, Healing Bear and our bot with the info, uh, info dumps and stuff like that, and that's where we're at.
Okay. New people are new people, bots are bots, and something about dumping trash.
Yep, yep. That's, that's about right.
Nailed it.
You're on board. Thank you, sir.
Perfect.
Right. So now I gotta figure out where we're gonna go next. Um. So we talked about the bot and Healing Bear and stuff like that, and adjustments that we're gonna continue to make to that. Try to make it work for us. I mean, if it comes down to it, we'll, we'll back to the hosting of stuff. Um, but I think the adjustments we made today, I wanna see how they work out, how they go. Fox or the Games News Channel, I don't mind that one being, you know, posting a whole bunch. That gives people an avenue that don't Twitter or look and see, uh, information that they may not get elsewhere, which is not a bad thing. And then people can always, uh, mute that channel. Like, I, I have it so that it notifies me, but I don't have it says my phone or do anything else. It just tells me I have messages in there that I haven't read yet. So people always have that option to mute certain channels. Hi, Rachel. Thunder, your sister's here. Mom, your daughter's here.
Something came up. I gotta go.
Oh, man.
Okay, so let's.
I definitely think it's a lot of information, and I know that like I, I've definitely noticed there's a lot more notifications on the phone, but like you said, I've got it set, so all the channels except for the general and, uh, the Destiny are muted. So I, when I log in, I, it's highlighted that, hey, there's new posts there, but I don't get notification. It doesn't pop up and go ding, hey, you've got a new message to go look at. So there's a lot of information, but that's exactly what I did too, because I like to know sometimes like I'm not that interested in what's going on with a lot of stuff, but we have the switch now for the kids and for me, and so I'm like, oh, hey, what's going on in the Nintendo? And it's nice to be able to scroll through and see some of that stuff. So no, I think it's good.
Yeah. And I, I was hoping that it would was, uh, and I think if, if we can just to like, I think he had like four or five different, uh, tweeting accounts in each one of them. So when we reduce that down to like one um, we'll have to see how well that, that works out. I think he took all of the bots out of ESO one. Let me double check. Yeah. Did. So he's gonna, he's gonna manually post those himself, which, thank you, Healing Bear. Um, Division is down to one, so that should reduce the amount in that one. And I think Destiny still has two. Yeah, Destiny the Game and Bungie Help, which they hardly ever tweet unless it's important, important information. So we'll see how that goes, um, for a little bit here. Maybe we, uh, if we need more information, I'm sure we can always add more, but uh, I think if our, our Discord was much bigger, like a thousand people, yeah, I would say much information as possible because there were, there are people looking to eat, eat that kinda stuff up. But since we are u- under ninety people, slow play it a little bit and then make things work.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, well, it makes sense to have stuff that people are, um, gonna use, and at the moment, we don't have so much stuff going on that you need that. You know, a huge volume, so that's all good.
Well, and the cool thing is, is it's expandable, so we can all go down, we can go up, we can, we can adjust and move, which is what we want and, um, the problem with some of the other bots is they're, they're limited, like, they give me one function, but all the functions that I want in one. So that's why I have to have two or three bots for different things, cuz I want specific things out of each one, but they won't give it all to me in one place. So.
Right, right.
Unfortunately. Alright. So let's talk about our, our primary games and how we how we have things set up and whether or not we like the way that is set up or, um, we need to make adjustments or things like that. Um, so currently we have Destiny, Division, and ESO as a, as a small side piece. Um, sorry, Mums, no offense.
No, not a problem.
Um, I, I think I was talking to Thunder about this. Um, I think it was last week. Um, I like having Destiny as our mid-primary primary game just because it seems like um, a lot of people kinda fall back to it when they're doing other stuff. Division is very close second, like, those two are very interchangeable. Uh, I don't know how much I can like Borderlands three is probably gonna be. Um, but without like a clan in system, uh, cuz you can get like sixteen players in a multiplayer in, uh, I don't know how many players can go in Division at one time.
What's that?
How many players can you, can you do multiplayer with more four players in Division?
I mean, the, the raid is an eight-man group.
Okay, so eight.
I know the, what PvP like conflict is, I think, four V four.
Right.
Um, that's pretty much it. Can't think of any other options, really.
People can you party up with in the story mission? I know at times we ran with three or four with Division one near, there, there near the end when I was playing. Is that the same where you can run with three or four guys and, uh, party?
Yeah. Yeah, four-man, four-man groups for the PVE, like story content, missions, all that.
But eight-man groups for raid?
Yeah.
Okay. So I mean, but that, that shows you the, you know, those two games have player base because you can ha, you can have more people playing together one time doing certain, uh, especially with a clan system and stuff like that, that they have. Not knowing like Borderlands, how, oh, what, Call of Duty has something like that? I, I used to set with that one up for the other, uh, Call of Duty game, right? Thought we had a DPS that was called, somebody did.
I mean, we, there were a few of us playing it. Um.
We had a clan tag.
Usually you can just.
You just set a clan tag and, like, no clan or anything, but you could just go in and it was like, do you want a clan tag? And so we'd like to DPS as our clan tag.
Right.
With a tag as DPS or something. So, but it wasn't like a clan, like an actual clan. It wasn't something where we could join in and you would get stuff. Now, I don't know if they knew it was Call of Duties. I don't know if they had a perk system or a grouping system for, uh, for the other thing. I mean, anybody could just go in and change their clan tag, uh, dungeon protocols, and then they could have just said they were, oh, I'm part of dungeon protocols. Anybody.
Right. They didn't have an official system.
Yeah.
Correct.
And that, and that's kinda why I like putting those other games in their own cha, uh, because they don't seem like they're gonna be as big, but they're still things that people are gonna play, are gonna play Halo when it comes out next year with the new console and everything else. Something they're gonna do, whether or not it's gonna be a big enough title to expand our numbers into and, and, and set up a, um, system and stuff like that is to be seen, uh, to be determined at that time. Uh, but I think the Destiny Division ESO seem to be our, our three, our three biggies.
When does Borderlands drop?
That drops in September.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah. Well, we got Call of Duty coming out and the new expansion for Destiny. And I think there, there was a fourth, another big game.
I thought, did they delay Halo to next year? Cuz initially they were saying Halo is gonna come out this year.
No, they're gonna release it with the new console next year.
Okay. I missed that somehow.
Yeah, that, that was gonna be, uh, their big forerunner for the, uh, not, what do they call it? Scarlet, Scarlet console. Yeah. Project Scarlet. Thank you, son. Appreciate that. My manager's over my back telling me what to say.
Gotta love it. Alright.
Um, so are you guys happy with the way we've got things set up? I know we've got a lot of channels in each, um, like Gambit and Competitive and Throwback and Lord, uh, General and that. Do, does that seem too much or too many channels? Or does that seem like it's okay? Cuz it seems like we're getting used out of each, um, in some ways and some times, but I just wanna make sure we're too overgrown with stuff and make it too confusing, or if we're kind of in the middle where we're right in that sweet spot. Scarlet. Pump for nickel.
What?
Go ahead, Metal.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I mean, for Division in particular, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with the variety of channels that we have, but, um, I don't think we need necessarily any more right now. I don't think we need necessarily anymore right now.
And that may change when they come out with DLC and uh I think they're talking about survival and stuff like. I need a channel and stuff for that at some point but it's like I said it seems like everything used so. I don't see any reason to cut anything at the.
Yeah, the only thing I don't know is is the um the Gambit channel used or is it um. Cuz originally the thought was that we would yeah I was gonna say cuz originally the thought was that we would be running that more because of um. The thing with the drifter but if most people are done with that and everything's mostly happening in the. You know your our uh general LFG for Destiny then we may not need that one.
Right, and that may very won't be true cuz. Not many of them playing Gambit.
See I would be but I can't so.
Well, but even then I mean I I've seen people on talking about it online and saying the you know. Number of people playing Gambit the barrage of season of the Drifter has definitely um same thing with. Uh whatever the other you could go into and get smashed in there.
Yeah.
Many people are playing that anymore either.
Well, yeah, they kind of wore it out.
Yeah, they they went a little hard on that so it I think it was then a little bits so. I would definitely probably agree Gambit I think the last post at the beginning of last month in there so.
Yeah, and that could just go in the regular LFG the general Destiny.
Yeah, I would agree I'll I can put that one in the retire. Section if we ever need it just in case they do another event or something with it can always bring it back.
Yeah.
Does that sound good Thunder?
Yeah, no that makes sense.
Oh my god you got a lot more clear what the hell?
Cause I've got a headset on now I'm out of my truck and I just got home. Um but yeah no I think that so I guess for the channels you know I think as far as channels per like game go yeah I think we're pretty good I think that. Some of the channels like has already been mentioned definitely don't see as much use but I think for the games themselves I think that what we have is a pretty good setup um. And so yeah I think that as of right now everything's probably good on that front.
Yeah. Yep, people have places to go when they have things to do that's all that matters.
Yeah, and I feel like people are using it you know I I know I'm not paying as close of attention to just uh Division and older ESO and things but. I know that on the Destiny side of things people are definitely using the LFGs to you know I see people posting in the LFG. And people are talking in the general which is I guess that's the one thing you know we had talked about in the past we didn't want. People you know like I know there's people that are not really communicating between the different games. I know there's quite a few people who are but the one thing that is a little I guess questionable is that. We have guys who are in a game and they're not really talking to anybody else outside of that game and so there are people. In certain in games that aren't really like interacting maybe with their every everybody which is something that we had talked about in the past. How do we want to address that do we want you know we wanted fluidity between everybody so we had the general chat for. All general chatter and just people talking and having fun getting to know each other so that we all communicate and we all kind of. Get to know each other cuz there's people that are playing Division that I've never really spoken to outside of hey welcome to the clan and. So that's my only my only concern is that was a big thing in the past that we really wanted to stick with that even. As we grow in numbers of people in the Destiny Clan and in the Division Clan and in the Discord in general. We still wanted everybody to kind of stay in communication with each other and we wanted to everybody to kind of know each other's you know get names gamertags. Displaying whatever you wanted so that we could all talk and joke around together and you know and I guess that's the only. Concern I have with the maybe with the number of channels but that would be that would be my only concern is we there are people who are kind of. I don't know hiding is not the right term for it but you know they're kind of in their in their game but not really anywhere else. I mean to be honest I think that's always gonna be an issue I I don't think that's gonna be something we can escape. Yeah, no and that's and I'm nuts and I think that that's something we. You know it's something we've worked in the past to try to get away from and I didn't know how quote unquote serious we wanted to be about that. Currently so.
Well, like I I don't I'm not quite sure how much um we can do I know um on. Friday when we on last one we had a couple of the new people. Uh hopping on to play Destiny and stuff like that uh for Forklift was there I was just like hey uh you know if you see Forklift on or whatever. Uh you know hook up with him uh any of those people uh uh Rubber Ducky. Or anything like that cuz they play earlier and stuff like that trying to you know say you know we're here to help and do things with. Cuz he was offering to help out uh I forget who it was uh run some stuff. Um because they were there I was just like yeah just we're pretty easy to just. People have to be able to you know take that that little bit of a step and be like hey we please and then we'll be off to the races.
Right.
But I I wondered. How much people had on their own and that's why I kind of like poked it a little bit on Friday and kind of was like hey yeah talk to. Forklift if you see him on early he doesn't bite too often but you know. He's your he's your go to guy on early nights and he's.
Forklift bites a lot. Thanks Forklift if you're watching.
I'll send this what I bite oh my god. So in but it may take um every once in a while to go in and just poke the bear a little bit and 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 try to. Get people to take that little leap and see if they start showing up and talking to people and some. Metal you and I were both very very similar when we we I think I went six months without talking to. Anybody or joining any chat and I was like oh these people are gonna hate me. To do where I'm at so.
Well, I think uh part of the deal is some of our some of the folks that have joined um they're pretty pretty uh. Actually they're they know what they're doing in that sense um and they're like the ones that are working on grinding out to get caught up in Destiny. I mean that's their focus and so they aren't worried about socializing as much as getting to a place where they. Excuse me can be useful in their brain in the activities that are going on instead of being you know the underling. So I think that's yeah I think that's part of of what we see but I still think it's. Um it's important to make sure that they know that we're we're a a complete unit you know we're all all together. Um not not just the Destiny people and the Division people who play Destiny you know etcetera so.
Right, and that's what was kind of a nice nice to see people that are across the board and playing different games. Uh like Archangel and uh. Couple other ones ones um that they're jumping around and don't play. Even Healing Bear jumping to Destiny and then jumping back to Division throwing down something ESO and and stuff like that so.
Yeah, we've probably got quite a few of them yeah.
Yeah, actually there's quite a few of them jumping around. I know Lady.
Which is good I mean that's kind of that's kind of what we were hoping for we were kind of hoping when people would join if they joined Division that. They would at least come join the Discord sides or the Destiny side some and.
Right.
Right.
Now it's kind of our our hope was as we're adding people you know obviously if they only play one game that's totally fine and we're not gonna say. You can't join the clan if you don't play you know.
Right.
Destiny if they're a Division player.
Oh, we can do that.
To have people we it's good to have people who are playing Division as their primary game um but yeah no it's super awesome to see and that's kind of what we had hoped for. When we had talked about um kind of splitting off and making you know letting uh joining in more stuff with. A couple of one or two other games initially we had kind of hoped for people that would cross so no that's super awesome to see.
Well, I think that we'll find that people that uh game regularly tend to not play just one game. So I think that that's why um Metal doing the multi game approach has worked well. Um because I mean when you get tired of messing with one it's nice to have somewhere else to go to and. And people that you know and and it's nice to have kind of the same groups of people so you you kind of know who's who you know when you're hopping around you know.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, that has definitely worked out. I quit you're the leader down.
It's cuz his it's cuz his name is Circus Pizza anybody who's on Circus Pizza is gonna make us all look bad.
True story, true story.
You can't say no to a baby circus pizza I mean it's just impossible.
Alright, cool so. Where do we? Um what are some of the things that you guys want to uh work on and I. Move into next or do or where do you think we're lacking in? Um stuff that we we together need to do or um is there like spaces in different games that we need? Work on a little bit cuz I know like Destiny we definitely have lapsed on our. For sure. And I know that's partially my juice due to the fact that I only have my two nights a week. And and uh with the amount of crazy shit they've been coming out with each season time it takes to get that crap. Uh it's really put a a hamper on wanting and trying to get into raids in six or eight. Hours trying to complete those kind of act so. Uh I know that's one thing I wanna try to work on I'm hoping we get some. I'm not sure how that will work.
Well, the only way the only way that part will get solved is you have to designate that. Even if it's only one week out of the month you know the second week of the month it doesn't matter what they've released we're going to do the raid that week. That is what we will do and then the other time cuz cuz the truth is if you did it every other week. You could spend like we talked about you could spend do it progressive do part of it in the first part like we used to and then finish it out so it's not so late. You know on the weekend but if it's a designated then everybody knows that's what we're gonna do that week. And so they can all work their their cuz you're right there's so much stuff to farm um they can work all the farming around that. Um and then you'll and then you'll get the raids done but but it's gotta be designated you can't you can't let it float depending on who you find. Cuz if nobody's used to us doing that anymore I mean we've lost we used to have almost two full raid teams worth of people. And like with modifier and I not being able to be in the game that's two people we barely have one full raid worth in our time zone. I think we've got a raid worth in now in um the eastern time zone.
I think we have enough people that hopefully start getting to stuff like that so yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's what we need to do it just needs to be planned so that people know that's what we're gonna do that week and then. You know and do it.
So speaking solely for the Destiny side I think the the two big things we've lacked and a part of it is my fault for. Cuz I used to run a couple of weekly events and I kind of let them die because there just wasn't a lot of activity on them but. I think that we need to reach out to one person in the eastern time zone and maybe that make them a since we're kind of talking about a sub admin role. If somebody wanted to spearhead trying to get those earlier people together to do events and. And it'd be like hey do you want to once a week be like hey I'm gonna start running stuff early you know I know Inverness is on early and Inverness plays quite a bit she just plays. You know generally by the time I get on she's like within her last thirty minutes or just got off so I know I miss her a lot. Um but she plays quite a bit like from seeing her in Discord she plays three four five times a week. But just I never see her on because of our time slots I get home at five and now you know my schedule is gonna be a lot harder. Um because football's starting and I'm I'm gonna be helping coach um two of my boys' team so I'm gonna be getting home at. Eight thirty and getting kids showered and in bed so I'm not gonna be looking to get online until nine o'clock my time which is. Ten o'clock Pacific which is gonna be you know just put later and later and later for everybody so it gets kind of it's gonna be a little crazy for me to try to run events. Um but I think that running a raid event once a month is not a bad idea and I think that maybe that is. Since we've gotten away from that but I think that we need to have some weak things too um where we need to talk to you know some folks and be like hey. We would really like somebody to kind of spearhead and you know we you could you know Tahoe you could spearhead something on one of your two days but I know with you only having the. Trying to do a lot already but you could say you know hey every Tuesday we're gonna do this and you know. I'm not gonna have football on Saturdays and Sundays so maybe I need to try to start looking at doing something over the weekend again and I can talk to the wife we're also. For me this next month month and a half is gonna be super crazy till the end of August because we're moving and so I'm gonna have limited time.
Well, you're gonna lose your internet too so.
We're possibly gonna be losing internet for the month of August and we're gonna be completely gone for fourteen twelve fourteen days. Um and so I'm gonna be I'm gonna. Potentially be gone all of August but we are you know I can look at trying to do something on Saturdays before that if I have some free time now. We can look at trying to do something um when I get back but it'd be really good to talk to one of those eastern central guys and be like hey Rubber Ducky. Fox or Fox uh Forklift or uh Inverness and be like hey do or even Dead Eye do one of you guys want to? Spearhead and do a early event and it doesn't have to be anything crazy it could just be like we're gonna do nightfalls and do strikes. And just make it a a thing that you do like when I did nightfalls I mean the for the first like I don't know four months I did nightfalls I would run. Twelve nightfalls thirteen nightfalls in a night I would just sit there and run nightfalls for four hours because.
I still haven't got my duty bound.
You're welcome um and so we would we would do that and if some people wanted to farm and so sometimes we'd have you know sometimes we'd have two or three teams running. Because you have guys who wanted to farm and so my goal was to get as many people through as possible so I'd get one or two guys but maybe I'd run like. Two with me and Pioneer and a third and then somebody else was like oh I wanna farm this and so Pioneer would hop out and then. Me and let's say Rubber Ducky and we'd have a third and so we'd just keep cycling through people and then. Pioneer and Rubber Ducky might be like hey we just wanna keep farming this so then we'd have another group split off with three guys and they just sit there and farm it while I worked people through. And so I mean I would run twelve thirteen maybe even more nightfalls in a night and I did that for months and I did that on. Oh and night every night yeah this time is nightfalls anybody who wants a nightfall done. We need to do nightfalls and I think one of the big things that we're missing right now Destiny is we're missing the endgame stuff and we're missing. Progression in certain like certain things like that like hey crucible anybody who wants to work on crucible like right now if you want your revoker. You need to hit thirty five hundred uh.
Yeah.
Uh valor you know uh if you wanna work on Gambit you know you gotta hit all those bow kills and wins and stuff with bows and so you know you that's something to work on. And now with Lumina people need uh or not with Lumina with uh. Oh yeah Lumina you gotta get the kill in Gamma Prime and Vlad Juju so I mean I think we need to talk to some people and this is something that I I was doing. And honestly I think I quit last year at this time because it got really hard because I was having to push everything back so late because once football started I wasn't getting home till nine o'clock.
Right.
And then everybody kind of fell off and nobody really kind of carried that and I think that we need to find one or two people who are willing to set aside some time each week. To spearhead a couple of events and I think that will really help you know and yeah I think that if we set some things in stone and then the other thing. Um I really think we should do is, besides that, is we need to plan a couple of fun things. Like the SRL thing, I know the SRL thing didn't work out the way we had hoped to. We also don't have that many people in the clan right now who were D one players who still have D one. I think that if we were like, hey, who wants to do a clan Gambit tournament? You know, and Gambit's hard because it's four on four and I know we don't have a lot of people who necessarily wanna do rumble, um like one V one stuff or. But you know, we could set up some tournaments and I think it'd be a really good idea to try to set up some sort of a tournament, we could do a, we could do like a nightfall strike tournament. Okay, these are the modifiers, you have to use these modifiers and uh. Any weapons, you can use whatever you want, but we are running this nightfall and you take a picture, post it in the channel and whoever gets the highest score. With these modifiers wins a DPS cup. You know, and you know, we send them a DPS mug. I think like if we do something once a month, once every couple of months. That'd be a a fun thing that we could kind of make happen that.
We could do it once a season.
And we could do, yeah, we could do a seasonal, what's the seasonal event right now?
Oh, there you go.
Maybe that's not the best, I, a seasonal event might not be best, because like this was menagerie, so. How do you score a menagerie? You don't really, you know, I guess speedrun, see who can complete it the fastest. See who gets the highest. Yeah, so I think that, you know, something like that, you know, last, last season it was Gambit, the season before it was. Get the highest, you know, score on a black armory thing or something, but I think that it would be really good to try to. Do something like that and you know, um get some sort of an involvement, some sort of a. A challenge within the group and invite people and then, you know, we have some guys who are division and Destiny as a sub game, we have guys who are ESO and maybe. Play a devil a little in Destiny and invite those guys too and just be like, hey, this is for everybody, you know, get a group together if. The division guys wanna get a quote-unquote division group to come try to beat the Destiny guys in our game and. You know, wanna show us who's boss and they wanna do just a division group then and have them come in and try to wreck us and. You know, I think there's some really awesome ways that we could do that and we've got enough people in the Discord and we've got enough people in the clan that we can do that. Um the problem is getting enough people active and that's the other big problem with the raid team, like Mums was saying, like. Right now, getting six people online, I mean, I know I was. Right now, like this last Tuesday, I got on an hour late and there were still, there was only three people in the chat. And you said that that earlier in the night, one or two more people had been on, so there were four people. And then we got down to three and so there wasn't really a raid group, so that's. I think we need to find a way to kind of get people back together.
But but that's why.
There was um and this was like six o'clock, six or five, there were seven people on playing Destiny. Um several of them were new, uh I don't think had. You know, been in that scenario yet or even knew what uh our clan knights were about or anything like that, I don't think they knew, but there were seven at that. And then it dropped a couple, you know, when I got on it, jumped up a couple and then. It was, you know, it was off and on that, so. I think the people are there, but at different times and we're just kind of, kind of missing each other.
Well, and that's why uh we had originally, when we did our last, our last meeting, we wanted to get enough people for the eastern group. To be able to have people to run with, because that's. Um we've always been able to find people generally in our time group, but we're having a hard time finding them there. I think the people are around, it's just getting them all connected.
Yes, I think that's where we're at now is the people, there's people there and they're playing. Uh even Skye is is on during the day at at different random times. It's just getting them to connect with each other.
Yeah.
Use the resources that we've set up as far as like the events app and LFGs and stuff like that and then. You know, trying it out and seeing what happens. People that talk. Yeah, dead I told.
You want me to talk more?
We we talked about meet and greet events at one point, it was definitely. Um an idea that we had to do new member clan meet and greets. Definitely worth looking into again, that's for sure.
Audio channel and it's gonna be a mandatory meeting and everybody has to come in and we'll go around the world. World and go by time zone and you have to introduce yourself.
Yeah, that would be funny. Hi.
I know one person who would have a hard time with that.
And husky puppies.
I like trigger triggers with triggered, hair trigger triggers with all the trickery triggering.
I didn't get to see him this year at the Fourth of July parade, so I'm pretty pissed.
Well, that's sad.
Tom says, we can do it in private matches, it'll be fun since Dragon will.
Dragon won't be here to murder us.
Quickscope matches on Call of Duty.
That's so funny.
Oh my god.
So Metal, how how do you feel like events and people getting together and things are going on the vision side?
Um I mean, for a while, it seemed like people were making good use of the event app and and trying to coordinate together. It's it's definitely slowed down, um but hopefully it's gonna pick up once title update five comes out and. Be some big changes to uh skills and things like that, hopefully making more diversity with builds and that stuff. I mean, I I personally haven't been able to be as diligent myself with kind of. Doing organized clan nights on a regular basis. Seems like over the last couple of months, when I do happen to hop on, usually I end up just looking at the roster, seeing. Trying to figure out who's being active and all that stuff and I'm trying to do more ads administrative functions. As opposed to actually just enjoying the game. So now that we're kind of maxed on capacity and I don't have to worry about recruiting, I I'm hoping to get back in there and kind of. Get back into enjoying the game and.
Now, when you say building, do you mean like Fortnite or that?
Kidding, kidding.
Can you revoke my adminship for that?
Yes, but no. Well, and I think that brings up the the point that we had talked about metal, we've got a good amount of people. Here, almost ninety people in our Discord, uh you're at max with fifty, fifty division, we're at. Forty something with.
Yeah, I think forty-three you said with Destiny, yeah.
Forty-three with Destiny.
That's pretty good.
I mean, that's definitely. But that's every game? I I just, it depends on. Um people that.
No, I was saying, how many of the forty-three, I know that the division people, the most of them are still pretty active, but how many of the?
Uh there's three I wanna boot off of there. I mean Phantom, Tardy, Healing Bear, Ham are playing right now, so there's four playing at this moment. Crimson, I don't see him coming, um Inverness jumps on everyone's, everyone's whole venom jumps on everyone's. Well, Silverback, no, Cruel, no, and Demon Sept- uh Demon Seption. Uh my brother, no, and then everybody else is kind of. Um whether or not they're jumping on and off, Bishak's still in there. So there's, I would say.
Probably have thirty-nine.
I would say less than that, maybe thirty-seven or so.
Oh, really? I didn't think it was that high.
Well, we have quite a big flux that have come in though.
Yeah, we have people that play, um it's just. And at different, uh, you know.
Well, see, and and with uh modifier, excuse me, modifier and I and our lovely internet, I mean. Uh like I told him, for us to get some stuff done, we've decided to try and do something a little bit before I go to work. And then my window, you know, my Destiny window is about an hour, hour and a half if I'm lucky when I get home. And then it's, it's gone, you know, and there's nothing we can do about that, but it hurts the group, because. We're both in the same boat, you know.
Right. Um the other thing that I do have is they did update Bungie.net so that it actually tells me when the last uh somebody played. Was.
Oh, nice.
Yes, so I can actually, kind of like Metal does when he goes through his roster with uh Division and it can tell who is and isn't playing. Um it is a resource. Yeah, we could use that to see who is and isn't active if if we wanna go that route.
Also with the um the Destiny side, I know. Defy Vendetta, uh Defy Ghost Guy is in, I think in the chat right now. They're in, they're in their own clan right now in Destiny two, but um, you know, I think they did mention they may. Be playing again sometime soon, I mean.
Right. I remember you telling me that.
Right, they were already in a clan, right?
I'm sure they'd be more than happy to play with folks, um. Maybe they'd be inclined to move over to our side.
How you guys doing? Come drink the water on this side. Is that, is that helpful?
No. Too funny.
Was that better?
One of us defy, one of us. Chasing random triumphs says Pioneer would might uh or might be something we can work on too.
Well, and that could be something that um if we're planning, you know, if we actually try to. That that's the hard part is, is they've dropped, like you said, they've dropped so many trinkets at times, people have got to um. Set aside the time and say, okay, tonight, you know, ahead tonight, we're gonna work on this and we used to do that.
Well, that's the, that's the hard thing about Destiny at the moment is that we talk about, you know, we're not getting to the endgame. When you look at the way they've set up the game and and done all of their development over the past year. All of the stuff we're doing is endgame stuff, we're just not doing the end, end, endgame stuff, you know, like. That's where they push the raids and stuff or the the people that are burn up everything during the week and they need something to do.
Correct.
That's, that's where the raids have have fallen, which is a weird place for them to be in. I almost liked it better when we had D one where we had those long, where there was nothing to do. And just hammer at those raids until we got them done, uh instead of endgame content like. Bad juju to chase, um the other pulse rifle and whisper the worm, the tho- those things are really. Fun and easy and and things we can go, I wouldn't say easy, but things we can go do and they're endgame activities. But they take away from driving that chase to go run down uh a raid for sixteen hours or whatever it is.
Right.
So it it's, I don't know if it's just the way that they've structured it or the way um people talk about it.
I think it's just how people fall, yeah, you just fall in, well, you fall into the.
I think endgame.
Into the pattern.
I think people think of endgame stuff though as stuff they can't do by themselves, you can't go do it at nightfall by yourself, I mean, yes, go. You can solo, a lot of people have said you can solo the. Uh you can solo all of them. Can't do it. What?
Is he breaking up for everybody else? Is it just me?
Everybody's breaking up for me, so. Then I don't count.
Is that better or no?
That's better.
Sorry, I moved my headset around. What I was saying was, I think that when people. Their their thinking is things that are not by themselves, so uh or they cannot, like you, or a lot. Can do bad juju by yourself, you can do Lumina by yourself, you cannot do a nightfall by yourself, yeah, you could go LFG for a group, but then why are you in a clan? There's no point, if you have to LFG to find something, like the other night, I felt bad, because you know, Dead Eye messaged us. Gordon was like, hey, I was gonna jump on and see if you guys wanted to run nightfall, but I see you guys are doing blind well. And then he got online and LFG to group and then like we finished blind well like ten minutes later. And we jumped into and we ran like two nightfalls. Our show was like, oh, we got a message in, or Pioneer was like, we have a message in Discord, and I was like, what? And I looked and I was like, oh crap, Dead Eye. No, come back and so then we invited him to the party and then we ended up, uh we were gonna run it with him, but he was like, oh, I actually just. I'm just doing it over and over with these with these guys and we're doing it and so he and he. At that, but like that's the kind of thing that, you know, and I know Dead Eyes had struggles. Periodically with uh getting groups together anyway, but and that's part of what we need to try to get guys lined up. With other guys in their time zones and stuff so that we can do, but I think that that's, that's why people join clans is because they wanna go grind nightfalls. They wanna run rip, I think it's fine to say, yes, getting everybody the outbreak prime, like when we were trying to work it. Their whisper and even if we didn't get them the masterwork, getting them the whisper was something we were working. Got a lot more, we went and we recruited a bunch of people and a bunch of people don't have that, but I think that that was something that. You know, we could get back to, um but. I think that when people join a clan, they're looking to do those activities like nightfalls, like raids, they're not. To necessarily have a group to go get outbreak perfected, now outbreak perfected in and of itself is a little different story because it is so challenging.
I would say that's a game for sure.
It is something that you definitely need coordinated and that's gonna be much easier with a um with a clan, so. Say, I guess, and same thing with whisper and things like whisper and out, this would be two that I can think of that are not. Um something you could solo, um there's just no possible, I mean, if you can solo those, I mean. You probably don't wanna be in our clan. Shut up, he could not. Somebody, he still needed somebody to be there to at least be a bullet sponge while he murdered everything.
Yeah.
That's true, that is true, somebody sitting in a corner just.
He was like, you die, go stand over there and die and if you die, don't worry about it, they'll shoot your orb while I murder everybody, thanks Dragon. You're gonna come get me? Uh, no, shortly, hold on, let me finish this and they'll come get you. Thanks Dragon, you're the best.
Anyway.
That was not a sarcastic, he was really good.
Yes, he was really good.
And he was very nice, he was just very quiet and like just surprised us all by saying he was gonna take us and raid and rumble and then murder everybody.
Anyway.
There was a lot of death.
Like I said, PT crucible matches. Hey, I went crazy at one point and they started helping him and I wasn't even on his goddamn teams.
It's true, I remember. Okay, so I guess that's what all I've got for events or where the state of whatever the question was.
Right.
I know I answered it, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, and I think that as long as we're all on the same page and then we we have an idea of. Where we wanna go and then what we wanna try to push it, it shows me that uh um if I'm gonna keep doing clan nights and stuff, I. Probably should specify like Tuesdays to be, I almost said Mondays, fuck it, uh Tuesdays. Need power grind stuff since, you know, like Healing Bear was saying, every three months we have new power levels. So trying to get people on Tuesdays, but then switching over and doing endgame content stuff on Fridays when we have. Time and trying to push stuff like Whisper and Zero Hour. And raids and stuff like that and and trying. And, and trying to get those things on those, you know? If we don't get enough people for that, then we can, I can move into something else if need be. Or I could uh, LFG and pull some randos too and, and try together to do those bigger end game contents on Fridays.
Well, honestly, I, I think it will take us showing that we're gonna be consistent and then people show up.
Right.
Because people don't show up when you are inconsistent. So.
I'm sorry that life is so crazy.
But that's, you know, but that's the deal is.
Thinking of which, I have practice in an hour and a half, so I will be in Clan Night.
Yeah, but if um, but you know, if we said we were gonna do a raid and say we had eight people show up, um, there's nothing wrong with us splitting into two groups, two even groups and going through and working through the first room or the second room or, you know, whatever. Um, just to give people the exposure and to work on those particular mechanics and understand the, the stuff. I mean.
I know it's been a little while, but we five manned the raid.
I know.
We did.
We could get eight, if we could find two more people, we could try to five man it again. And you know, it's definitely more difficult, but if we can get eight.
Well, but I was thinking of the ones that, you know, that haven't been completed because we have several on the list, but but that's my thing is that it requires consistency to have people to know that we're really gonna show up and do this, you know?
Yeah, Totes might come back if you actually paid him for that bet in.
Who's paying who?
Wasn't, weren't you paying Ta- weren't, you had to pay Totes, you and Kane had Totes.
No, 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 no.
Ah, no, it was the other way around.
I will, I will repost that video for you to watch again because they owe money for that.
Oh, so maybe if you forgive the debt.
You'll never hit that shot in a million years.
Maybe if you forget, forgive the debt, Totes will come back.
Yeah.
But um, um, uh, what was I gonna say?
Do events have consistency and they will come.
See, I see Pioneer knows they owe me fifty bucks. I will take thirty-five.
She's all about that money.
Feed it back.
Not a bad way. Love you. I'm upstairs, she's downstairs. She's gonna come up and throw stuff up.
She's gonna hit you.
So Metal, eh, if we, now that we have ninety with the fifty, fifty, forty split on our, our membership at the moment, for division, um, since we're not highly focusing on, on recruitment and stuff, we go back and forth in, on it every once in a while, but maybe moving into doing some events and stuff like. I'm not telling you what to do, but, but um, we could definitely try to set up some stuff. But we can, I mean, a lot of those guys actually have been talking to each other and been very helpful about getting together. Been kind of awesome to see that in that, uh, and I do go through and I read everything. For anybody doesn't think, anyways, um, but yeah, they, they seem to helpful in talking to each other. It just may need that little extra kick in the butt to, you know, make it solidified.
Well, I, I think the idea of having a couple of, like we were talking about, um, of having like the sub, a couple of sub admins, people that if nothing else, just help. They, they, uh, people that are regular, um, see if they're willing to help one day a week to get something done or coordinate to get certain things done. Um, would remove some of the weight of that from the admins. And it would also help encourage other people to, to do things and, and ha- it doesn't have to be a heavy, heavy lifting thing, but something that, you know, is beneficial.
Well, that's kind of why I was thinking about the, the sub admin role that uh, I set up for Healing Bear is what if we did find people that were willing to do those things? Uh, and we set them up and roll like that, like he's doing with the info dumps and stuff like that. Um, that's basically doing something that we were doing manually. He's to uh, either do it himself or automate it. Um, but if somebody wanted to run like events during the week, we could use that sub admin role as a way to have people uh, focus around them or gather around them too. Kind of like a, kind of like an authority figure idea, but on, on the grand pyramid of things just below us.
Yeah, well, because it's, it's just getting other people involved and helping coordinate and do, you know, um, because I know for a while there, there was a couple of times that uh, Forklift did that for the earlier folks and it went really well.
Yeah.
Um, and they need that.
It was working for a little bit and then it slowed down. Uh, and some life stuff that was going on and he was like, hey, I, I won't be able to do it for a little bit. And I was just like, dude, that's that's why I didn't said anything in stone or anything yet. We were just testing this out to make sure everything was gonna work, but um, def- and I don't know if it's whether or not we see if somebody wants to do it that's already, or uh, if me and Metal go back to the drop out recruiting people.
No, you want to use people that are here.
I would, I would think so. Um, I just know the leaders and stuff out there that, and we're not that big yet. That's all, that's all possibility yet.
On the, on the division side, I've already kind of Kush kind of approached me, um, as far as, he kind of wanted to, he had asked about being uh, bumped up to lieutenant status on clan roster in game.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, I mean, I, I um, actually thought it was a good idea, so I, I went ahead and, and did that. Now, by doing that, uh, basically he can help me out with admin functions, so I don't necessarily have to again, if he's already in, I asked him to do some things on the roster for me. Um, and actually I will talk to him and see if, if he's interested in maybe doing one night a week where, where maybe he organizes a activity or something regular basis. Um, and I'll, I'll try and do the same myself. That way if it's two of we getting regular, consistent, organized activities on there, it'll, you know, just maintain
Right.
Things on, on this side.
And that's uh, KU5HK1N6?
Yes. Something like that. But.
I should, I should want double ten.
And I'll, and I'll probably, I mean, I'll see how he feels about doing that. Um, I wouldn't even mind asking in chat, see if there, maybe there's one other person that wants to uh, step up and do that. I mean, you know, the more people, the better.
Yeah.
Right.
And we'll, we'll see. But yeah, like, like I mentioned before and like you mentioned, now that I'm done with recruiting for the time being, I'm, I'm definitely gonna try myself to, to be more active on the activity side.
Right.
So we'll see. But yeah, I, I do agree with um, getting more, more people involved, maybe getting delegating some more responsibility to a certain, certain people and seeing where that goes.
Well, that, I was getting bigger was that we were gonna have to rely on some people to help us with some things. And hard because I want to be able to do as much as I can. Um, I know especially like with our activity test channel and stuff that I've got going on that nobody else can see, but that we're trying to figure out activity log bot thing that we're working on with random and Tetra, Tetra, Tet-
Tetricus.
See, ah, Tetricus. Um, so, so like those things have been, I've been trying to focus on getting those things together and, and asking people for help rather than just try to figure it out on my own and just hacking my brain, brain over stupid shit. Um, so that's been cool.
And I think too, I mean, it's, we can, we can make sure that people know whether it's Division or Destiny. Make sure that they know and they understand. This isn't like a commitment to a full-time permanent administrative thing. They don't even have to be a sub admin. They don't have to do anything, but we just want other people to run events because we can't always be on, you know, like my life.
Right.
My life's gonna be crazy for the next several months and um, I'm not gonna be able to run. Nobody else is gonna want to participate. Otherwise I would be running a event.
Yeah.
My life's been active for a little while, but if somebody's gonna, if they, you know, say, I'm just gonna use Rubber Ducky. If Rubber Ducky's on every Wednesday, as you've been on every, how would you feel about making Rubber Ducky's Destiny Wednesday and you can make it make it be crucible, you can make it gambit.
Yeah.
Neat.
Well, that's what I was thinking with the sub ad.
This week we're gonna chase.
Admin role because I didn't want them to have to deal with any of the, the bigger deal, but kind of take over what we were doing when we were first started out, which was, you know, doing, helping out with events, um, you know, getting um, helping people out and stuff like that. And then that would leave us open to when we do have issues with, you know, people being shitty, whatever, that would, that's where we come in and, and do that stuff and they don't have to deal with bullshit stuff. They can do the fun stuff.
Yeah.
Regarding connecting members to one another, we, we could create an introduction for sorts where people can provide information that just gamer time zones and whatever else they want. We have, we had at one point where we had a time zone timesheet.
Yeah, we, we tried to do that, but it, but we couldn't get, uh, it ended up nobody wanted to participate. We'd have to, I'm not sure how we would go about making that happen.
Yeah, what we did was we created an, it's uh, our Google Doc. And we asked, we was going and sign up and put down the date and times, but.
Jeff.
We just didn't get, yeah, did not get. I think the difficulty with that is, I mean, we are
on the freezer, go grab the burgers.
A group of casual players by nature, so.
Yes.
It, you know, it's
In the freezer.
It's hard to keep everyone.
I'm not in the freezer.
Not. If I don't give, freezer, no, not.
But, but that is, that is part of the deal, yes, Metal, is that because we're not a hardcore, you have to be these things group. It's hard to get people, um, that are, um, yeah, that have, or have the time. That's part of the deal is a lot of people we bring in, they work and they have things going on. And they play when they can. And so it, it creates this, this flux um, instead of a, a consistent stream of people, which, which adds to the being hard to coordinate things.
Yeah, I can flex.
Thank you, son.
I don't need to know that.
Shrap Pioneer.
What'd you do with them?
The guns? I put them away.
I don't want them on the inside so I can get them to make burgers here in a few minutes.
They're dangerous.
Are the buns out now? Okay, we'll go get them. Jesus Christ.
They want to eavesdrop.
I told them, I told them, I was like, okay, we're gonna try to get done at six, six thirty and then I'll make burgers for you guys, dinner and stuff like that. But we tend to go over on our conversations, so try my best.
Alright, I'll stop talking.
No, you're good.
Twenty minutes anyway.
What are you gonna, you?
Gotta take kids to football.
Got football.
Food, foosball.
And they get to go get wet and run around.
Is that circus?
This'll be my, this'll be my last practice on the sideline doing you're gonna sit there and point laugh.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you get a coach now.
Yay.
Not today, starting next week.
Anywho.
Okay. Healing Bear, did you have anything else that you wanted to put up in questions, comments, concerns? Um, that actually goes for anybody that uh, is.
So it's how these crazy people get in charge of this group?
Circus.
If only then. Cute.
Seems like a good idea. Definitely Ghost Guy.
Okay.
So.
Ghost Guy.
We, yeah, he's one of our newbie. He, um, so.
Ghost Guy.
What we try to do is every once in a while, we were trying to do these once every season of Destiny when that was just our main, main game. We're doing a town hall meeting where we kind of discuss what's going on or uh, how things we wanted to work on or change, whatever was that was going on. Um, and this would give everybody kind of a voice to be able to come in and be like, hey, uh, I think you guys should do this or, you know, and talk about that, um, that's why we have the admin chat open so that everybody can see too, so that you guys can see what we're talking about and what we're doing. Um, this way it's not hidden behind anything and that everybody feels like, you know, we're, they can see what, what work we're doing on certain things and stuff like that. And I know in the kind of a hard part is when secret chats were.
Yeah.
Around, you didn't know. Yeah. Right, Thunder? No secret chat?
I like secrets.
Yeah, we know you do, but.
I love you, but I hate you.
It's a very special, there's no secret Discord chat and you talk.
Don't want to hear about it.
Boy, that's really, that was really specific.
Very specific.
No secret Discord chats with the administrative people. Those other people and other Discord and talk is not a part of it, so it's not affiliated with Destiny.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna boot those two people is what's gonna happen. I'm gonna, I'm getting rid. Then it won't, I wanna, I wanna boot, oh, I can't boot Silver now because he actually came back and started talking. I'm gonna boot him.
You can boot Silver, he probably wouldn't care.
No, I don't want to boot Silver.
I keep trying.
I know they're being, they're being turd. I tried to get my brother to come back into Discord and uh, he's busy working on making his own game right now, so.
Oh, see how he is.
Hmm, right? There's no secret Skype chat. Wait, what? There's a secret Skype chat?
No. Not Skype.
Oh, man.
I've, I've lost all control. I, I, I don't know what to do, but.
Did you, did you ever really have any?
I was gonna say.
I, I hope. I never really asked for it, but I was like, alright.
Ah, too funny.
I feel like I'm leading you, you guys all in a journey into the nothing.
Ah, too funny.
Did I ever have control? No, God, no Pioneer. No, that's, that's the funny thing about Dungeon Protocols is I don't think anybody has ever had control over Dungeon Protocols. It's always been this weird like free form, do whatever the, how you want. Yeah, well, it was way too much free form.
Yep, lots of dick jokes.
But that's, but that's, but, but but that is what it was, uh, you know, back in the day, what it was established as.
Yeah.
But I like what it is. So I don't know. You guys will have to decide what you want to do about that.
Well, we are still lovable jackasses. I, I, I do, uh, we're just polite, lovable jackasses now.
Polite's good, polite's good. Manners is a good thing.
I would almost say we are, we are no longer the most hated clan on the internet. I would, I would.
We were at one point?
Getting better.
Probably was.
At one point, uh, yes.
I'm sure.
I've heard.
Before my time or after my time?
Before your time.
Before your time, I'm sure.
Before your time, wait.
Just thinking about the people that were here before, I could totally see that.
Wait a minute, I've been here for a long time. Are you talking about me? God damn it.
Ah, well, you weren't the only one that was here.
No, we were the quiet one.
Yeah.
That's right. That's right. We were just watching the mayhem from afar. That's true.
Yes.
Red was dabbling on the fringe, just trying to stir up trouble.
He was trouble. Are you kidding me? I, I would agree. This is quite multi-handed. But we, we did hold that title for Destiny for a whole little. Or sorrow, so, so I was told.
Well, I'm sure, sure.
We are better. We are better now. We, we are rehabilitated now.
I can unhabilitate.
No.
I can.
I'd like to see that.
Rehabilitate?
No. Tahoe, no.
Uh, I'm making it worse.
Say it's spell bunny is.
Reverse this image.
Yeah, you, you guys go do that in a private match and have fun. How's that?
Ooh, yeah, uh, we used to only.
Pay you what?
A one V one, and no eyes Luna and.
There's no eyes Luna.
Yeah, whatever the machine.
You cut out, no eyes Luna and.
No, whatever the machine again, like.
Oh, no reclos.
In goodness. No.
No lunas hell, no. Lunas hell.
No hand cannons, no, no hand cannons.
No, you guys have to use the same weapons. You guys have to use the same weapon.
Oh, I have to use the same weapon?
Yeah.
Alright.
Something neither one of you like.
Something neither of us like.
That's right.
Rocket launcher?
That's modifier.
The colony.
The colony, oh, that would be awful.
Colony versus colony. And the only other weapon would be a sidearm.
Yeah.
That would be amazing actually.
All sidearms.
That would be fun. That would be fun.
Sidearms and colony. First one to colony wins. Come down. It'd be also close quarter.
Alright, so what's next on your agenda there, boss toy?
That, that's all I got at the moment.
Okay.
Uh, so if.
Really, he's in trouble with the boss because he's not cooking burgers, so he has to go off.
I, the boss is getting, actually, you know what? I'm surprised my daughter's not out here yet because she's the one that's coming, I'm so hungry.
I'm so hungry.
So I'm still, but yeah, I think uh, I think we're good for the moment.
So my takeaway from this is uh, from earlier that people are new people, people are, new people are new people. We're dumping the trash and that we more of it.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Get back to the basics, organize activities.
The basics, drunk raids every Friday.
Drunk raids every Friday?
That, that would bring uh, Totes back.
I, I might come back to Destiny for that.
Ooh. Wait, is he threatening us with that or?
No, that was a, that was a promise. It's not a threat.
Ah, that's funny.
That was a, I might was a promise. Uh, he might.
Word alterations.
But he promises he'll definitely think really hard.
He would think about it, yeah.
If we start during drunk raids.
Alright, and so uh, we're going to also set aside, pick the second week of each month or something in Destiny at least and make it. Cause we have many raids. You guys have many raids you need to accomplish before Shadowkeep, man.
Yes, we do. We've got many. Pioneer is on board for the confirmed.
Yeah, she's already.
I've got confirm, confirmation. She's already drunk. What are we talking?
You're drinking.
You're not. I'm making the taco dance on our stream, by the way.
Okay.
I made the taco bigger now. Okay. Alright. Disperse, have fun.
Alright, have a good dinner, everybody.
Hi.
Bye.
Later.
How do I get out of here?
You're not innocent.
I was innocent. Still here, of course I'm still here.
Oh, mom's, I love you. Oh, no, did we lose it? Oh.
No, I'm here.
Okay, we're still here.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out a boot shirt. It wouldn't let me.
Now the mum's is gone, we can do the, the uh. The after uh, after uh, party.
The after party?
Yeah.
Let me refill my drink.
We can. We can talk about whatever we want. We can cuss, yeah.
Jäger bombs, jäger bombs.
Okay, maybe not that crazy.
You're rude.
Alright. Um, I'm gonna, I'm booting, I'm booting Thunder first. Oh no, I can't boot him.
Yeah, you can't boot me?
Oh, I can.
You don't.
Bye, Metal.
Alright, I'll talk to you later.
Later.